I would like to call the Council Committee of the Whole meeting for April 18th to order. And at this time, for our moment of silence, you know, as we head into spring and baseball and there's sleet flying outside our windows, at the same time, there are people in Arizona saying, dang, it's 105 degrees, actually, at the same time. You know, it's all part of the seasons in our lives. You know, things come and go, and people in our lives come and go, and weather comes and goes, and it all comes down to there's a bright sunny, sunshiny future in front of us all. So with that, let's take a moment of silence, please. Thank you all very much. Alderman Tompkins, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Tompkins. Tiffany, would you read, call a roll, please.
Here.
Tompkins?
Here.
Done.
Here.
All present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. I did see those lights weren't right. And thank you, that's what a good mayor poll Tim does, make sure you press the right buttons. Put the lights out, yes, right. Again, I want to wish you a good evening, and as we begin this meeting of the City Council, I would like to welcome all of those in attendance, and also those who are viewing the meeting on television or on the Internet. We respectfully welcome all of your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We are happy that you're participating in your city government, and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance, and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones and other electronic handheld devices, as they can be disruptive and interfere with the audio system here in the chamber. Tonight at our Committee of the Whole, if you wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on a committee agenda, you are encouraged to do so during that standing committee. You will also have an opportunity to address the City Council under the public with business portion of the meeting, which will occur towards the end. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself or the committee chair, and speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. And we will ask you that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes. I ask that everyone observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. And again, thank you for being here. Is there a city administrator update this evening?
Just with the weather changing outside, let you know, we do have Public Works crews on call tonight to distribute salt if we need to go there, and then when we get back to spring-ish type weather, we'll be filling potholes again this weekend.
Thank you. Another one of those cyclical changes in our lives, and that's great. Thank you. We have six public hearings this evening. First group under Community Development, and Alderman Grip will lead that public hearing.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you said, we have two public hearings. I open the first public hearing for the ordinance for case number ORD 18-03, request of the City of Davenport to amend Title 17 of the Davenport Municipal Code entitled "Zoning" by amending Section 17.36.030.B.6 by adding sale and storage of fireworks and explosive devices subject to such uses being located more than 1,000 feet from any residential district to the list of permitted uses in the M1 Light Industrial District. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Please step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward.
Good evening. My name's Dale Gilmore, and I live in the 6th Ward. I'm sure many of you think you already know what I'm about to say, but you're probably wrong. Please just listen for a couple of minutes. Thank you. My concern is four words here, fireworks and explosive devices. I do not consider myself an expert in the field of fireworks, but I do have some pretty extensive experience, AKA the TNT, if it doesn't say. I'm not against the intent of this ordinance. In fact, I suggest you move it on to this discussion agenda for next week. Now here's my issue as it is written. About eight or 10 years ago, I don't remember exactly, Tom Engelmann was Alderman of the 8th Ward. Tom's favorite saying was, "The devil is in the details." I'd like to point out the flaws in this proposed ordinance as it is currently written. I believe it's best to work out all the bugs before final passage. I believe this ordinance is designed to regulate what used to be called Class C fireworks, now referred to as 1.4G fireworks. These are intended for use by the general public and include such examples as fountains, cones, firecrackers, and bottle rockets. This ordinance as written would certainly regulate those. It would also regulate the sale of what are commonly called novelty fireworks. A novelty fireworks is defined by the American Pyrotechnics Association, or APA, is, quote, "A device containing a small amount of pyrotechnic and/or explosive composition but does not fall under the category of consumer fireworks. Such devices produce limited visible or audible effects. Examples are snakes, tanks, poppers, and snappers," end quote. As written, these would fall under the proposed ordinance. I'm sure you all remember those small party poppers. You know, you pull the string and a small explosion, you know, propels confetti or streamers airborne, whether it's that word explosion again. No longer will you be able to stop by your favorite local discount store to purchase your snakes, sparklers, snappers, and poppers. These highly explosive and dangerous devices will also be restricted to locations zoned industrial and at least 1,000 feet from any residential area. And what about, what about these? Don't anybody have a heart attack? These are certainly an explosive device. They would also fall under this proposed ordinance. After all, it is an explosive device. So yes, the devil may be in the details on this one. You have six weeks to get it right. Think it through, take your time, get it right. I would like to again quote from the American Pyrotechnics Association website. They state, and again, quote, "The APA compiles industry statistics and facts and serves as a central information source on regulatory actions and other matters pertaining to the pyrotechnics industry," end quote. Maybe someone could contact this organization and receive some assistance or suggestions to address the intent of this proposed ordinance. Again, I'm not against the intent. I just think you need to say what you really mean and mean what you really say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's been a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This public hearing has been closed. Public hearing number two is case for, case number ORD 18-01, amending Title 17.41 of the Davenport Municipal Code entitled "Zoning," HCOD Highway Corridor Overlay District and ECOD Elmore Corners Overlay District by creating an Elmore Corners Overlay District and Design Standards. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Please come to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please.
Mr. Chairman, Your Honor, members of the council, good evening. My name is Greg Jager. I'm an attorney at the Pasternak Law Firm, 300 Block of West 3rd in Davenport. Here tonight on behalf of THF, Davenport North, the owner of the parcel upon which the Walmart store and the associated commercial buildings are located. Originally, the Elmore Corners Overlay District included our property. It was removed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. We ask that the council support and follow the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. We ask that the district not apply to our parcel, because we have been here since 2001. At the time we came before the City Council and asked for rezoning, the idea of placing a Walmart store on Elmore Avenue was unexpected. In fact, there was no Elmore Corners there, you know. Elmore only went so far and stopped. There was quite a bit of consternation about the concept of putting a Walmart out there, and there was a great deal of neighborhood meetings, meetings with staff, meetings with council and council members. Ultimately, a rezoning of the parcel to PDD was agreed upon and approved by the City Council. That rezoning contained a number of conditions. Now, this took place back in 2001. The parcel that we are talking about tonight has been developed in accord with the conditions on that ordinance since 2001. Not only was the Walmart store developed according to those conditions, but so too, about two years ago, when Dick's and Golf Galaxy and Field and Stream came onboard according to the conditions that were placed in that ordinance, when Hobby Lobby was put in according to the conditions that were in that ordinance. Over the course of the 17 years, we believe our development has been a benefit to the city and that it is a nice-looking development. We don't hear any complaints about the development as it exists today, and so we don't see that there is any need for additional regulations on our parcel, which, unlike other parcels, has been and is being developed, and has been for the last 18 years, 17 years. And even more recently, the conditions that were in that ordinance are still being followed. I think it was last fall when the council approved an agreement with the developer over the payment of a traffic signal on Elmore Road that was paid for by THF. That was a condition that was in the ordinance originally. At such time, as staff determines that a traffic signal would go in, and so it did. And, as sort of an aside, the THF was so anxious to follow the conditions in the ordinance, they actually offered the money to the city before the agreement was even approved by the council. So in short, we have lived with the conditions in the rezoning ordinance for the last 18 years. We, in essence, made an agreement with the city on how this parcel would be developed, and we have abided by those conditions and upheld our end of the deal. I think that is why the Planning and Zoning Commission recognized that the development in the overlay district for Elmore Corners could certainly proceed and be successful without necessarily imposing itself upon the property owned by THF. Now, it's no, no small matter that these regulations will increase the cost of development and will decrease the universe of potential businesses to be located on that site, but the larger picture from our perspective is that we made our agreement with you back 17 years ago, and we've abided by it. We appreciate the efforts of the Planning and Zoning Commission to recognize that, and we hope that the council will do the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from the public who wish to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, based on some conversation we had yesterday and a request from our staff, I would move to continue this public hearing if it is sent back to P&amp;Z, and we'll get into that in the Community Development portion of this meeting. So I make a motion to continue the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That concludes the public hearings for Community Development, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. Our next group is going to be Public Works, and Alderman Ambrose will lead that discussion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open a public hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost covering the Main Street landing, Phase 1. Before we get into this, I'd like to have staff come up and refresh everybody's memory of what the plan is.
Brian Shad, Public Works. I just brought a couple of quick images, just to kind of give a quick showing of what can be. I do want to clarify, this is not what's on the agenda for this council cycle. What's actually on this council cycle is what's underneath. The proposed plan is to improve the storm drainage beneath, obviously take out the existing parking lot that's there, and then replace that foundation with new subbase and concrete to provide the foundation for the decorative papers, the potential for knee walls, and we've also shown here the potential for LED lighting throughout the N5 lot. And again, just another quick visual of the flex space that can be used both for parking and for events.
Thanks, Brian. Why don't you just leave that up? Anybody from the public, please come forward, state your name.
I didn't intend to speak today, but anyway, Bill Handel, Board 4, and also Nashville, Tennessee. And I know this is something that the council has been looking at, I guess, for better part of a year. And as a retired architect, one of the issues, or one of the questions I have about it is how flexible is that flex space? It seems to me, and I mean, I've seen a lot of food trucks over the years at different places, you're not going to generally get that many food trucks at any one time, except when we're having festivals or something like that. And that all those trees and that plant, the planter bases and fixed seating that I think are proposed there are going to kind of get in the way of the flexibility that I think people are looking for. The one thing that I do think is a good thing, and perhaps needs to be expanded to different parts of our downtown, is the power outlets that will make it so that we're not going to be having to deal with generators. So overall, I don't know what the, if this is the 400,000 just for the part that's under the ground, I don't know what the part above the ground's going to be, but perhaps it, when we finally get that, it might be, that bid, it might be better to, perhaps look at a different option. I would recommend something other than this, but thanks very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Handel. Here, and seeing nobody, I move to close this public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Second item is a public hearing on the FY19 Iowa Department of Transportation State Transit Assistant grant application in the amount of $430,350. Anybody from the public? Here, and seeing no one, Your Honor, I move to close this public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number three is a public hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Davenport Parks Restrooms Project. Anybody from the public? Here, and seeing no one, I move to close this public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The last item is a public hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the installation of traffic signals at the intersection of Utica Ridge Road and Veterans Memorial Parkway, Forest Grove Drive. Anybody from the public? Here, and seeing no one, Your Honor, I move to close this public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. That concludes our public hearing. And again, as a point of reference, public hearings are the ones that basically start the process. You're going to see some of these same items in our actual items that we'll be discussing later in the meeting as part of our agenda. Our next area is we have five appointments for tonight's meeting for the Citizens Advisory Committee Grievance Subcommittee Appointments, and they are, as you can see in your agenda, Joseph Obelton, Joe Heinrichs, Elizabeth Hodges, Jim Hepner, and Regan Johnson. Is there a motion to approve those appointments?
No.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much, and I thank all those individuals for agreeing to serve. Are there any petitions or communications by any of the council members this evening? Alderman Dickman.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick reminder that the Quad Cities Big Table is happening this Friday and Saturday, so if you haven't signed up for a table or four, you should do so. It's very easy. The website is just QCbigtable.com. And also, if you have some time on Saturday, there is a Minority Youth Health Conference happening at Central from 10 to 3:00, and I'm told there will be quite an assortment of exciting topics and prizes available, so definitely check that out if you've got some time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Alderman Clule.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to mention that we're having a special ward meeting for Ward 6 on the 26th of April. It's going to be at McKinley Elementary School at 5:30 in the afternoon. There's been a lot of discussion, a lot of concern about what's happening with East Locust. There haven't been any cars lost and any potholes out there yet, but there is a lot of, a lot of discussion about what's happening. So based on those comments, those concerns I've had, I said, well, let's do a special ward meeting on that particular issue. So on the 26th, we're going to have that again at McKinley. In addition, since I don't think that's going to take the entire time, I've asked Congressman Loeb Sacks' aide to come in and talk about what congressional services are provided to the local community, so we'll have that as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, we're going to move on to action items for discussion this evening. Our first area to be discussed is Community Development, and Alderman Grip will lead that discussion, and Alderman Clule will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. We've got a full discussion tonight, so we will jump right in. The first item in Community Development is a third consideration, ordinance for case number REZ 18-01, being the request of Tom Swanwick, DBA Forest View LLC, for a rezoning on 1.19 acres of property known as Lot 3 of Ride High, 2nd Edition, located on the south side of East 46th Street between Grand and Tremont Avenues. The rezoning is from C2 General Commercial District to R6M Planned Unit Development to construct attached townhouses on individual lots. 10 units are proposed. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number two is a first consideration, ordinance for case number ORD 18-03, request of the City of Davenport to amend Title 17 of the Davenport Municipal Code entitled "Zoning" by amending Section 17.36.030.B.6 by adding sale and storage of fireworks and explosive devices subject to such uses being located more than 1,000 feet from any residential district to the list of permitted uses in the M1 Light Industrial District. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from council? I do have one question, and I spoke with Bruce. There was no map in our packet that shows where the M1 Light Industrial is and where the fireworks would be. Can we get that before next week, please? Thank you. Otherwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. Just one question to staff. Do we need clarification on the definition of fireworks and explosive devices, or is that explained to us through state law?
Mr. Gilmore here made a great point about the separation between the classes of fireworks, because we do have the 1.4G, which is the fire, the consumer fireworks that we're looking at, moving to the industrial zone, as well as the novelties, and we need to look at that and probably reevaluate that to separate the novelties out from the 1.4G, and we'll do that this, before next week and get some information out to you.
Thank you. That item will stay on discussion, and we will move to item number three, which is a first consideration, ordinance for case number ORD 18-01, amending Title 17.41 of the Davenport Municipal Code entitled "Zoning," HCOD Highway Corridor Overlay District and ECOD Elmore Corners Overlay District by creating an Elmore Corners Overlay District and Design Standards. And before I ask for public comment, I'll bring Bruce Berger up from Community Development to talk about this and what the recommendation from our legal staff was to us yesterday.
Bruce Berger, your Community Planning and Economic Development Director. So the overlay district, it really is trying to clarify the process. Right now, what's in front of you, as I think one of the petitioners mentioned, or one of the stakeholders out in the Elmore Corners area, the Plan and Zone Commission removed some of the outlot properties from the THF ownership from the overlay. And what's a little unclear, just from a process standpoint, is that if, in fact, there was a vote taken by you all, and let's say you added property back in, it's a little unclear whether you need a super majority or not. Are you actually voting in favor of what Plan and Zone Commission recommended, or are they only recommending approval based on the removal of those properties? And so just to clarify, that that may be perhaps an unlikely circumstance, but to clarify, so I did talk with Plan and Zone Commission Chairperson today, and they understand if council would choose to push it back to them, they can take a clarifying vote so it's clear whether they're supportive, whether those properties are in or out, and it'll be clear from a legal standpoint, when it comes back to council, what the voting parameters are. Does that make sense?
All right. Thank you. So I will open it up for public comment, and then also comment from the council, and then I think Alderman Clule is going to make a motion at the end of the discussion to send that back to P&amp;Z. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I agree with THF. They've been in our community, have done so many great things, and, you know, for their request to keep their property off of the Highway Corridor Overlay is, I think it's reasonable, and I think the zoning board had it right, so I do support the developer.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Seeing none, I will turn it over to Alderman Clule.
I move that the action be moved back to Plan and Zoning for clarification of the overall overlay concept, intent. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This item will be moved back to P&amp;Z. All right. And we will move on to item number four, which is a resolution authorizing the conveyance of vacated public right-of-way, that being part of East 10th Street lying north of the sidewalk at 1002 Bridge Avenue. Juan Goita is the petitioner. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number five is related to item number three, and without further discussion, I would make a motion that this item be tabled and brought back when item number three comes back from P&amp;Z. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And item number five will be tabled. Item number six is a resolution approving a 90-day extension of the moratorium on changes in business licenses in the Rockingham Road Corridor between Division and South Concord Streets, where the new license represents a substantial change from the previous use. City of Davenport is the petitioner. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. Can we have someone from staff come up and explain what we're doing and why we're extending
Bruce Berger, Community Planning, again. So last November, council put a six-month moratorium in this section of Rockingham along that corridor to allow, if you've recalled, and we're still kind of finishing up some of the infrastructure improvements there, with the idea that with those improvements, perhaps envisioning that some design standards, some use, any nuisance uses that are going on there, to try to analyze that a little bit better and allow some time. Staff then, after that moratorium went in place, looked at hiring a consultant. If you recall, we did a similar sort of a overlay and plan for Elmore Corners. The expense of doing that took a while to try to figure out what that scope of work would be. that scope of work would be, and the expense of doing that ate up a bunch of time. We ultimately decided that we had the resources to be able to do that in-house, but that we're already about five months into it. So, we started that. We did have one neighborhood meeting, and I think the results of that meeting were conclusive that we need to take some time, slow it down a little bit, and make sure that we get it right coming forward. So, hence the extension of the moratorium is just to give us some more time to be able to get that plan together.
Alderman Ambrose?
Bruce, so clarify, people cannot sell their property, or they can't sell their business?
The moratorium just says that if a new use that would trigger a business license that's substantially different from the previous business license, that that be tabled, that be put on hold until the moratorium ends and the new regulations are in place. So, yeah, sale of property is not impeded by that.
But businesses, any business license to change?
Yeah, the ability to get a business license that is substantially different from the previous business license is on hold currently with the moratorium. Correct.
That seems kind of heavy-handed. Thanks, Bruce.
Alderman Mattson?
I just want to say, I think the intent, and correct me if I'm wrong, is we're trying to revitalize this area, and we want to make sure that what goes in there is part of that revitalization, and if it's something substantially different that doesn't fit, we just want to make sure we're doing the right thing first. I think that's the intent, so.
And just to piggyback on my colleague Alderman Mattson, you know, Alderman Dunn and the city council have been fighting for a long time to get redevelopment down on Rockingham, and we made a substantial infrastructure investment to upgrade the street, and what we would like to see is that infrastructure investment lead to more retail, more business on Rockingham, but we also want to make sure that it's good development and the right development to bring to that corridor that needs it. And then I'll also reiterate what Director Berger said, which was, "We very clearly heard from the folks at that public meeting that to slow down a bit and make sure that anything that is brought to the city council comes back to that public group first and is vetted by the neighbors on Rockingham, and we certainly want them to be a part of this process." Now, the one thing I would say is 90 days, we're in the middle of April, so that takes you through July. Obviously, the quicker we can get this done while still ensuring that there's public input, the better, because we don't want prospective businesses to be losing the construction season. Seeing no other comments, we will move on to item number seven, which is a resolution for case number F-18-02 being the final plat of Betts Corporation Second Edition on 7.94 acres, more or less, located abutting to the east of 741 West 53rd Street and between 53rd Street and Colony Drive, containing three lots. The property is Zoned R1 Low Density Dwelling District. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on, and I will call on my colleague Alderman Dunn to set the agenda, or Cluell, sorry.
Thank you, Chairman Gripp. I move that items number one, four, and seven be moved forward to consent. Items two and six be moved forward to discussion, recognizing that items three and five have had motions already made. There is a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And that will conclude Community Development this evening.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderman Cluell. Our second area is Public Safety, and Alderman Rossen will lead that discussion, and Alderman Condon will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have several items on the agenda this evening. Starting off with number one, first consideration is an ordinance amending Schedule 14 of Chapter 10.96 entitled "Intersection Traffic Signals" by adding Elmore Avenue at the Walmart entrance. And I know there's a lot of people out in the community that are excited to hear about this update, and just so everyone knows that the light signals, as the attorney who was here commented on, THF, which is the property owners out there, are paying for that to have those installed as a part of their agreement with the city, so that's yet another good thing. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move on. Section two, resolutions closing various streets, lanes, or public grounds on enlisted dates. First item, QC Pride 2018 Quad Cities Unity Pride Kart Races, June 6, 2018, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Closure location will be Third Street between Brady and Harrison. And I'll go and read the second and then ask for input. QC Pride 2018 Quad Cities Pride Parade, June 9, 2018, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Closure location, staging area, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Second Street between Iowa and Perry and Pershing between Third and River Drive. The parade route, from 11:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., Second Street from Perry to the entrance to Centennial Bridge. This is pending approval from IDOT for Centennial Bridge closure approval. Anyone from the public would like to comment on either one of those items? State your name and address.
Andrew Arnold, Third Ward, Davenport, Iowa. I'm Andrew Arnold. This is Rich Hendricks, Michelle Royal, and Ashley Gomez, and we are members of Quad City Pride, Inc. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for reviewing our petition for the street closures in regards to the Quad City Unity Pride Week and Parade. The parade will showcase the best of what Davenport and our Quad Cities have to offer in the region and our nation. By approving the street closures, you will help ensure the grand celebration of our LGBTQ community while showing that our area is a warm and inviting place to live, work, and invest. Iowa led the nation with regards to marriage, and we hope to continue that tradition with our week-long celebration. Events throughout the week include a street fest, movie showing, pub crawl, a fabulous kart race, a wine gala, a pre-parade party, and finally, our nation's second-ever Bi-State Pride Parade. Thank you for your time, your consideration, and your continued support of the LGBTQ community.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Anyone else from the public would like to comment on either one of these items? And I see we have Alderman Mattson?
Thank you. You can just probably nod your head, but I assume the Centennial Bridge closure is like St. Patrick's Day where it's half the, not the whole thing, right? Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson. Any other comments from council? Seeing no one, that item will move on. Section three, motion approving noise variance requests for various events. One item, Quad City River Bandits. Modern Woodman Stadium, 2018 baseball season, April through September, outdoor music and announcements over 50 DBA. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? And come on up. Name and address.
Dale Gilmore, Sixth Ward. It's Twin Spin Wednesday or whatever. Normally, when there's a motion approving noise variance, there's a time limit. So, like, the stock car race is empty over at 10:30, but, you know, if they want to hold Rocktober Fest or something at Modern Woodman Stadium and run 24 hours a day, seven days a week for a week, they can do it and don't need a variance. So, I think I'd like to see a timetable put on this. I don't think that'd be unreasonable. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to comment? Anyone from council? Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thank you, Alderman Rossen. I just wanted to point out that there was some noise in the first game. It was, there was a new sound system. It was heard by many and commented on by many and addressed very, very quickly, and I wanted to thank everybody, the city, the River Bandits, to address this. The speakers have been repointed. The system has been dealt with, and it's very quiet there now, so I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Alderwoman Dickman?
Referencing the time aspect, is that a condition that we could get put on by next week?
You could tie it to both the team's schedule. So, if you think about what the Fairgrounds does, they have the list of events, so you could do home games and then decide if that time is 10:00, 10:30. I would look to Alderman McGinnis for a suggestion there.
Yeah, I think the history, there's been a standard procedure, I believe, if someone from staff wants to comment on it, that when the game ends, there's typically fireworks. And I think it's Alderman Mattson is saying it's a half hour after game end.
Can we just get that formalized by next week? Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments from council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Motion, number, item four, motion approving the petition for an alley light behind 2219 West Pleasant Street. Can't have enough lights in the city. Any, that's true, Mr. Arnold. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Section five, motion approving beer and liquor licenses, new licenses. West End Promotions LLC, 2200 West River Drive, Credit Island Park, outdoor area, May 4 through 5. Rev it up for awareness, license type C liquor. Anyone would like to comment on this item? From public? Anyone from council? That item will move on. Rudy's Tacos, 2214 East 11th Street, outdoor area, May 6 through 7, Cinco de Mayo event, and May 28 through 29, 2018 Criterion Event, license type C for liquor. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, that item will move on. Azteca Mexican Restaurant, 4811 North Brady Street, Suite 3, outdoor area, May 5 through the 6, Cinco de Mayo event, license type C. Anyone from the public would like to comment? Anyone from council? That item will move on. Gonzo's, 3923 North Marquette, outdoor area, May 4 through 6, 2018, Cinco de Mayo event, license type C. Anyone from public? Anyone from council? That item will move on. Abanero's Buffet and Cantina Parking Lot of 1510 East Kimberly Road, outdoor area, May 5 through 7, 2018, Cinco de Mayo event, license type beer/wine. Anyone from the public would like to comment? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, that will move on. And then the next section is our annual license renewals. I won't read through those. There's a lot of them. They're there in your agenda packet for your perusal, and that will, all the way up to Ward Eight, will conclude, and I'll ask Alderman Condon to set the agenda.
I moved to place all items on the consent agenda.
There's been a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed, same sign. And we're done, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Again, as you go into our third area, I just want to note very quickly, for those of you, maybe your first meeting here, we're going through every single item. When they talk about those items are moving on, next week at the council meeting, if they're under the, they've moved on without any further discussion, that means they'll go on a consent agenda and all be approved at one time. So, if you come to that meeting and you haven't seen and heard this, you can understand how did that all happen. It happened by the fact we've gone through every single item here at the committee of the whole, and those items that have no discussion and answer all the questions get approved next week. If there's discussion, we may approve them, but we'll discuss some more before we do that as we move next week. So, just to keep you informed of that. Our third area to be discussed is Public Works, and Alderman Ambrose will lead that discussion, and Alderman Dunn will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. I opened the discussion with the first item being a resolution approving the plans, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Davenport Parks Restaurant Project. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Second item is a resolution approving the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Main Street Landing Phase One Construction Project. You know, our riverfront development has been going on for over 16 years, building a vision and then the city following through with this. This is just another phase of it, and it's very exciting. As you drive down from Byder Beck, look at our award-winning playground, our boat launch, the Veterans Park, the water feature. You know, we've, the riverfront is very, very incredible, and USA Today, a few years back, did a survey about the best riverfronts in America, and Davenport had the best riverfront on the Mississippi, number three in the United States. So, our staff has done a great job. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Number three is a preliminary resolution to the FY 2019 Alley Resurfacing Program. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Number four is a resolution approving FY 19 Iowa Department of Transportation State Transit Assistance Grant application in the amount of $430,350. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Number five is a resolution approving the contract for the micro-surfacing and tape sealing to Missouri Petroleum Products Company, LLC of St. Louis, Missouri, in the amount of $490,254. Anybody from the public? Counsel? I'm going to read then six through 10, and then we'll ask for anybody from the public. Number six, the resolution approving the plan, specification, form of contract, and installation of traffic signals in the intersection of Yucca Ridge Road and Veterans Memorial Parkway. We'll take that individually. And THF, who came up a while back, this has been one of their commitments to that neighborhood, and they're following through with it. We thank THF. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Number seven is a resolution assessing the cost of condemning property demolitions at various lots and tracks of real estate. Number eight is a resolution assessing the cost of snow removal from sidewalks at various lots and tracks of real estate. Number nine is a resolution assessing the cost of boarding up buildings at various lots and tracks of real estate. And number 10 is a resolution assessing the cost of brush and debris removal at various lots and tracks of real estate. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Just to comment on, when the city orders buildings boarded up, we do have a resolution that was passed several years ago, the boards have to be painted. You know, they can't be installed without paint on them, so we might have to go back and look at some of the boardings we've ordered in. Number 11 is a motion determining property values covering the 2018 resurfacing, alley resurfacing program. Public? Counsel? Number 12 is a motion approving the special events agreement between the Davenport Municipal Airport and Aerial Promotions Incorporated Quad City Airshow. And our city administrator, can you briefly, we don't want to get everybody's hopes up, but there might be a hope for something down the road.
So, this is really an enabling lease. We had a 10-year agreement with the airshow that the event could occur at the airport, and this is just updating it as it expired this year.
All right. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Number 14 is a motion approving the change order number five, the amount of $56,120 to the sanitary sewer equalization base and supplement agreement number 2R contract with V-Sir's and Kim. The change order is required to continue onsite hourly construction inspection, engineering during construction, and documentation of the work for the Water Pollution Control Plant Optimization Project. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Number 15 is a motion awarding the contract for the east side of 200 block of Brady Street, streetscaping to Emory Construction Group Incorporated of Bowling, Illinois, in the amount of $56,042. Anybody from the public? Counsel? And the last item is a motion approving the city authorization to assess property owners receiving streetscaping improvement via the 200 block of Brady Street, east side streetscaping project. Anybody from the public? Alderman Dunn, please set the agenda.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose, but I believe you missed item number 13.
Number 13, a motion approving the contract for the sewer separation infiltration removal design and preparation of bid documents, the V-Sir and Kim, in the amount not to exceed $75,000. Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Go for it.
I moved to place all items on consent, please.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, Alderman Ambrose and Alderman Dunn. Our last area to be discussed is Finance, and Alderman Tompkins will lead that discussion, and Alderman McGinnis will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have seven items tonight for Finance. I'm going to start with number one is a resolution setting a public hearing for amending the fiscal year 2018 operating and capital improvement budgets. This item is just kind of cleanup. We do this every year as we're closing things out and getting ready for the year end. So, anybody have any questions or comments from the public? Anyone from council? This item will move forward. Number two is a resolution authorizing early redemption of certain maturities of general obligation bonds, Series 2010A, Series 2010B, and Series 2010C. Anyone from the public have any questions or comments? Anyone from council? This item will move forward. Number three is a resolution directing the city administrator to submit payment to Quad Cities First in the amount of $122,000 for the provision of regional economic development services for the 2018 fiscal year. Anyone from the public? Anyone from the public? Please state your name and ward. Thank you for coming.
You bet. Ken Kopel, First Ward, work for US Bank, I'm a day job, and I'm here representing the Quad City Chamber, actually. I'm a member of the executive committee. Want to start off by thanking the city of Davenport for being such an excellent partner with the Chamber and Quad Cities First in economic development. Over the last several years since we first organized the Chamber into a single entity and created Quad Cities First, and in partnership with the city of Davenport, we have worked together as a region on approximately 65 deals that have resulted in over a billion dollars of new capital and over 7,000 jobs. Sterlite, which is an addition of 500 new jobs, and Kraft Heinz, retention of 700, are two very good examples as to what success looks like when we work together as a regional team. So we're here today to seek approval, as you mentioned, of the one-year service agreement for Quad Cities First. And next, I'd like to have my colleague, Joe Slavens.
Mr. Mayor, council members. Joe Slavens, I live at Four Woodview Way, and I'm also President/CEO of Northwest Bank and Trust Company, the oldest bank headquartered in Davenport, Iowa. Formerly served as a Chair of the Board of Quad City First, and I'm the incoming Chair of the Quad City Chamber. I'd like to thank the council as well for the vision to put a regional services agreement in place. The Quad Cities Chamber Board of Directors has eagerly endorsed the idea of formalizing our partnership. We've been hard at work with our public sector partners to ensure that we have the right economic development tools in place that complement what already exists within the cities and county structures. While we intended actually to be presenting something to you as long as a year ago, the Quad Cities First Board appropriately adopted to delay the timeline in order to hire Atlas Consulting. They were hired to help us identify what next-generation economic development looks like in the Quad Cities. And as a result, the agreement was modeled after those recommendations and the focus of our work in the future to have the most impact we can on the return on investment that you are all making along with us. Thank you. I'd like to turn it over to Chance Lucasat.
Good evening. My name's Don Dusad. I live at 123 McCollum Boulevard and work at 306 River Drive. That's my headquarters. Many of, many of you know me as the Chancellor of the Eastern Iowa Community Colleges, who are soon to open a new campus in downtown Davenport. And a spoiler alert, you'll all receive a save-the-date announcement in the next couple of weeks for our June 7th grand opening. You know, shamelessly, I know this isn't the topic, but I have to at least make that offer to you since I won't be before you probably again before then. I hope that you'll be special guests at that opening. I also serve in the Chamber, on the Chamber Board of Directors, and I've just recently completed a four-year term on the Downtown Davenport Partnership Board. However, it's as the Chair of the Quad Cities First Board that I address you tonight in support of the request made by Mr. Kopel. I'm very excited about the future of our regional partnership to take economic development to the next level with your support and leadership. On Monday, Paul Rummler returned to the Quad Cities and joined the Quad Cities Chamber as President and CEO. At the most, at the most recent Quad Cities First Board meeting, we adopted the 2018-2019 work plan and are now putting the finishing touches on the, on the contract for services that Mr. Slavens has already referenced, all with the expert guidance of Atlas Consultants, which as a firm was recommended to us by your city manager, and we really thank Cory Spiegel for her leadership in that effort as well. We will soon be taking that agreement to all seven public entities in the coming year, beginning July 1. All seven public entities that are represented on the Quad Cities First Board, including the city of Davenport. Each member of that group, each one of those entities, is crucial to the collective economic development that we do in this region. I would offer you, as city council, special thanks, not only for your longstanding support for the regional economic developments of the Chamber, you've been there from the, from the start for us, but even more because it was specifically your impetus and leadership suggesting that we provide clarity in a contract for services agreement with the city that has brought us to the point that we are today. It was your request that caused Quad Cities First, again, with support and leadership from your city manager, to develop a contract for services, the transitional piece which is in front of you today. Again, the services provide, this, the, we've asked you to support the contract and the payment for services that have been provided to the city during this current fiscal year. These are the services provided both by the Chamber and Quad Cities First that have been ongoing and at the same level of service as provided in previous years, including business attraction, business retention and expansion, business creation, innovation, and provision of resources to manufacturers and small businesses. There has been no lapse of, in the provision of these services during this year. To give a few examples, through the second quarter, we've completed 39 business connection visits, 70% of which have been in Davenport, and we are scheduled to complete 100 such visits by the end of the fiscal year. We've also had 20 business attraction projects and 11 business retention projects come through the Chamber and Quad Cities First in this fiscal year. Last year, I'm sure you'll recall, that six of the seven successful business attraction projects were in Davenport. So beginning with the new contract for services on July 1, all economic development services provided by the Chamber will be consolidated under Quad Cities First, on whose board the city of Davenport is ably represented by your city administrator. The plan also includes metrics for which the Quad Cities First staff and board are accountable, and we will provide regular updates on the metrics and the economic development activities to you at intervals that would, you know, that would be acceptable to you, either quarterly or monthly, whatever would be appropriate. We believe that this is a positive direction for the, for this crucial regional economic development effort, and we respectfully request that your continued support through this transition year to the new model will take economic development in Davenport and the region to the next level. So, I'm sorry, that was a little bit longer than my usual graduation speech, but that's the best that I could do. The best I could do on a complicated topic. Be answer, happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Matson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So sir and gentlemen and ladies, thank you. We appreciate the leadership that Ms. Spiegel and you guys have worked together, because some of us who have been on the council for quite a while have heard many of people like yourselves come in front of us and talk about how the new model, how the new change to Quad City First, or how the new update will happen, and then we won't hear anything again. And then another person will come in front of us a year or two later and say, here's a new model, here's a new change, here's what we're going to do, all the way dating back to Nancy Mulcahy's, and some of you might remember that. So we've heard that for a long time, so I, I want to say that I appreciate and thank you for now putting some meat to what you actually say, if I can say it any other, the best way I could say it, with metrics and benchmarks, because we are, we have been concerned in the past about, you know, quite frankly, what we get out of what we do, and I know we work together well, but now that you've taken this step, at least from my perspective, this is a big deal. And, and I would ask that we get together more often and come and talk and work together instead of you come here, and now a year or two later, somebody else will come here and say we have a new model, but let's, let's, let's do this more often so we can talk about how we can work together better for the greater benefit of the Quad Cities. So, thank you.
We certainly take that advice, and we will be happy to comply.
Again, if I may, Madam Chair, one of the things I think is good here, and I want to congratulate all my colleagues, I think we're setting the, a tempo for this type of relationship with all of the agencies that we deal with. We are not only saying we want to be supportive, and the amounts that we've been paying are applicable, but maybe there's even opportunities to be more invested as we know exactly what we're doing as we move forward. And I think this is setting a trend throughout the Quad Cities of these types of agreements, and that's what you've outlined today as putting forward. So thank you for that, and thank you to my colleagues, because I think this is a good thing as well.
Thank you so much for coming down. I really appreciate it. Look forward to these steps. I think this will provide some great clarity for everybody's roles and ownership as we have different partners throughout the community, and so then everybody can be clear as to who's doing what. So thank you so much. Anybody else from the public? Anyone else from council? Alderman Condon?
You guys are here today to speak on behalf of Quad Cities First and the Chamber, so Quad Cities and Commercial, but I'd like to thank you guys for choosing to reside in Davenport and turn focus quickly to your residential investment. And we, as a council, are really trying to find that right recipe to solve the issue of neighborhood revitalization, and I hesitate to say that because I think all of staff will duck, because we go into a long debate whenever that comes up. But sitting before me is quite a brain trust, and you guys represent quite the brain trust, and I just wanted to ask you guys to become active partners in, in solving that, because I think we would all agree, so goes our central neighborhoods, so go our schools, and I would argue so goes Davenport, so goes the Quad Cities. So I just wanted to make that ovation.
And you'll notice that the Q 2030 regional vision that the Chamber has led has as one of its core strategic priorities, I guess is what you would call them, the revitalization of neighborhoods and the focus on neighborhoods. And I hope you'll all be part of the big table coming up this weekend. You know, that's also a neighborhood initiative, and so. Does anybody ever get comfortable in front of you, by the way? I mean, I've never, I've only been in front of you three or four times in my seven years here, and it's still, this is a very intimidating setting. And so I just wonder if anybody ever gets comfortable.
Obviously, you're getting more and more comfortable.
As long as I don't have to read from, you know, prepared text so that I don't happen to miss anything.
Do you see up here anything, Don, or?
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Just throw that out there. Thank you again, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on. Number four is a resolution adopting established mobile food unit zone locations, hours of operations, and associated fees. I appreciate staff being proactive due to the work that's going to be downtown this summer. They were looking ahead to make sure that these things will still be available as people are, got accustomed to them last summer. So anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item moves forward. Number five is a resolution awarding a contract to rehabilitate four city bus buses to Midwest Bus Corporation of Owasso, Michigan? Thanks. At the not-to-exceed amount of $560,000. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item?
Just a quick question, is that to refurbish current buses that you guys have now?
That is a great question. Actually, these are buses that are currently, they're not being used right now, and we're going to put them back out as they start the work on the bridge.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Anyone from council?
Just one quick item, again, to clear, when you talk about working on the bridge, as 74 Bridge gets more developed, it's going to change access across the river. So this is an opportunity to be proactive and be prepared to be able to deal with that during those challenges. So we, we're not talking about the Centennial Bridge here or any of the others. It's, it's the large bridge, new development's going to cave issues. So I think want to compliment the staff for being proactive in this particular endeavor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item six, is a motion approving the collective bargaining agreement for Teamsters Local Union Number 238? Anyone from council wish to comment on this item? Alderman Dickman?
I just wanted to thank council and staff for being really supportive of our Teamsters and negotiating in good faith, and I think that we all know, especially since it's snowing right now, that our employees, especially our frontline employees, really kind of keep the city running, and it's, it's only when, you only notice when things go wrong that how important your city government is. And so I think it's great that we try to recognize every day what great work our employees do. Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't mean to skip over the public. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Okay, thank you. This item moves forward. Number seven is a motion awarding the 2016 lease agreement, which was an amendment to the 2007 lease agreement with Davenport Family Homes, DBA Family Resources, at the Annie Wittenmeyer Complex. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, this item moves forward. Alderman McGinnis, will you please set the agenda?
Yes, Alderman Tompkins. I will move that all seven items be moved to consent agenda.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Excellent. Last, we have a list of purchases that are simply for informational purposes only, and that takes care of finance. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Tompkins and Alderman McGinnis. Are there any other ordinance resolutions or motions this evening? Seeing none, is there any public with business this evening?
Adam McCormams, Fifth Ward, I just wanted to let you guys know that I was supposed to have my regional track tournament a couple weeks ago, but it got canceled due to the weather, but everybody that was supposed to compete automatically advances to go to state, which is May 17th, 18th, and then I'll be back on the 19th. And I'm also going to a Cubs game May 9th, the week before, so just wanted to give you guys an update.
Thank you, Adam. Seeing no one else, are there any other reports of city officials? Seeing none, I would entertain a movement to, a motion to adjourn. Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.[1795.62]